But still, couldn't anybody find any place festive to be other than me? Like David, couldn't you sit near your tree?
Yeah. All right, I will announce this meeting is being recorded with the post township website, video website. You can submit public comment by email to glibicott@westrockhilltownship.org. We'll take the public comment to the end of the meeting where we will read the public comment prior to the vote or at the end of the meeting, depending on what is appropriate. Thank you. I'd like to welcome everyone to the December 21st Board of Supervisors meeting, and I would like to lead off by pledging to the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. If there is any public comment on the agenda items, I would ask you to identify yourself and then please state your name and address. I don't see any. Greg, you see any?
There is none on my end.
Okay, announcements. Do we need an executive session after tonight's meeting?
I have nothing for executive session.
I have nothing. I have nothing.
Okay.
I have nothing.
Steve, you have anything? Okay, then we will not have to, we won't have to have an executive session. Okay, moving forward consent agenda. November 16th, 2022, meeting minutes, the win plan review status, escrow release and vouchers, emergency services report, building and zoning, building permits report, public works report, park and rec committee report, fire contracts for some signature, $2,500 donation for the Penrich Senior Center slash Community Center. And the treasure report, I will ask Greg to read the treasure report and the payment of bills, or just read the treasure report. Thank you.
Sure, treasures report ending for November 30th, 2022, the general fund, $840,035.95, highway aid, $46,287 cents, open space, $1,486,566.56, the park fund, $37,431.34, the equipment fund, $19,764.16, highway capital, $131.26, the street lighting, $36,565.66, the reserve fund, the general fund reserve is $432,558.81, the American Rescue Plan is $549,994.67, Manderfield Open Space is $41,438.74, sewage maintenance is $189,330.20, stormwater fund is $11,447.80, and the escrow funds, $2383,742.52.
Okay, any questions from the board?
No questions. I make a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Okay, we have a motion made.
Well, no questions, and congratulations to all the firemen from Sellersville, Telford, Tyler's Port, and Trumbarsville for driving Santa around. I will second the motion.
Thank you, Mr. Shermer. All those signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, motion carries. Confirmed appointments is next on the agenda, and there are none listed. So moving forward, the committee reports, the first on the agenda here is the planning commission, Mr. Chris Durstein. I don't see him in here, Greg.
I think Alex is here.
Alex, are you here?
I saw him here earlier. He's.
I saw John Swerdruck too, and he left the meeting.
Yeah, Alex is here.
I'm sorry, I was having issues on muting there.
That's okay. Hello, Alex, how are you doing?
Doing well, thank you. Yeah, Chris left town unexpectedly just tonight, so he's asked me to fill in for him.
That's fine, thanks.
At the meeting, we reviewed the Klein lot line adjustment. It's 238 Green Top Road, one neighbor is trading another neighbor for a barn. We recommended approval with conditions as a preliminary final. We also reviewed the triple net investments, which is on Quarry Road. It's a subdivision of a part of the Drager property there behind the PP&amp;L parcel, and it involves about 30 acres where they're going to put in a 363,000 square foot warehouse with 87 loading docks and 77 storage trailers operating 24/7. Many issues were discussed, and there were several issues to address, and I apologize, I believe that was tabled, but I'm not positive on that one. We also reviewed Select Properties Lawn Avenue subdivision, which was a sketch plan for 80 single-family homes. This is between Lawn Avenue and Mountview behind the parcel that was approved for Wawa at the corner of Lawn and Ridge. No action, it was just a sketch plan, we provided feedback. We also reviewed a select properties sketch plan for their Ridge Road subdivision. This is the southeast corner of Ridge and Lawn Avenue, 4.7 acres with 28 proposed townhomes. Again, a sketch plan, so there's no action taken. Steve did question whether this is the best use for this location, or whether that might be better used as a commercial facility or a commercial property development. But it appears the developer is looking to move ahead with townhomes there. Again, no action on that because it was simply a sketch plan. Comprehensive plan, John Swerdruck was looking for some input from the Park and Rec Committee on several of the comprehensive plan topics that addressed them. And I think we're also still looking for some comment on forming a trail committee. Since Judy's left, there really hasn't been anyone spearheading that effort, and there have been several opportunities for trail interconnections. And then finally, the commission recommended approval of the codification of the zoning and subdivision, zoning subdivision land development ordinance. There will be more changes to come with the addressing tasks under the comprehensive plan, but we feel those changes will be easier to make once the regulations are codified. And that was about it for the planning commission meeting.
Okay, I have one question, or I should say, I would like to point something out to the planning commission and to the fellow supervisors. If anyone has driven past the proposed Lawn Avenue Ridge Road development from select properties, it's all been cleared. They have mowed down and cleared all that area. Has anyone seen all of the water laying there, how low that area is? I just want the planning commission to be aware of that moving forward, and also I guess Steve, that would be something that would be handled during, when this, if and when this thing ever moves forward to address or somehow, it looks kind of like a lowland wetland area now that all that brush has been mowed down. Just wanted to point that out, if anyone has seen that.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, we'll definitely take a look at that, but you may be a little bit confused. The property that's currently, I had a sketch plan submitted was the opposite side of Lawn Avenue, the triangle piece from the chiropractor to Lawn Avenue between Ridge and Ramp.
And the South Bend 309 ramp.
Right. The piece you're talking about is also owned by Select Properties. I think that was known as the old Sen Cow property.
Yes.
Yeah, they did clear it, but they said at this point, they don't have an immediate plan to submit for that property yet.
Okay, thanks. I had those two sites mixed up. I apologize for that.
But we'll certainly look at the drainage when we get to that point.
Okay, thank you. That's all I have, Alex, from me. Either two supervisors have any questions for Alex regarding this report?
I have none. I attended the meeting and I'm okay with everything Alex reported.
Okay.
I have none. I got to the tail end of the meeting, then went back and actually listened to the entire three hours and 45 minute meeting and.
God bless you, Hal.
Then actually went through and pulled some of the D's because I was trying to figure out, my thought, Wawa went through foreclosure, but it didn't, then this property was sold and got the entire, okay, there's one property on one side of Lawn Avenue, there's east side, west side, so it is a little bit confusing because there are three different select property projects, we're dealing with two of them, but I have no questions, although it took a while to have no questions.
Okay, with that, then I guess I would entertain a motion to approve the planning commission report as presented.
So moved.
Okay, motion's been made.
Second, David Collingwood.
All right, second, all those signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you, gentlemen. Motion carries. Thank you, Alex.
Thank you. Merry Christmas, all.
Merry Christmas. Okay, next on the agenda is the Conservation Committee report. Mr. Schrameyer.
Good evening, and I hope everybody has a pleasant holiday. Our last Conservation Committee meeting was held in person with all attendees wearing masks on November 17th, and the highlights of our meeting are the following. The Township Newsletter map, we've been trying to update the Conservation Committee map to show the different types of property conservation in better detail, and we've gotten pretty close. So we suggested that Barn Road and Cat Hill Road also be included in the featured roads since both roads have numerous conserve properties on them. So an email will be sent to Greg to add these, and then.
You went, you muted yourself.
You have to unmute yourself.
Okay, can you hear me?
Thank you.
I thought I pushed the button, but I might have leaned on the pad a second time here. Let me start over. Our last Conservation Committee meeting was held in person with all attendees wearing masks on November 17th, 2022. Highlights of our meeting, the Township Newsletter map, the proposed Conservation Committee map. We've been trying to work on new colors to make everything a lot more readable, and we've also suggested that Barn Road and Cat Hill Road be included in the featured roads since both roads have numerous conserve properties on them. And an email either will be or was sent to Greg to add these, and the new colors were approved. The West Rock Hill Township Comprehensive Plan Revision 2019. I contacted John Swerdruck of the Conservation or the Comprehensive Plan Revision Committee. We reviewed the Comprehensive Plan Action items and found the following three items that apply to the Conservation Committee work. Item one was work with farmers to preserve priority farms through Bucks County's agricultural preservation or by conservation easement. And then item 15 was assess the best use of the catch basin for the benefit of the township residents. And just to note that the last time we did this type of assessment, it's typically done in coordination with the Park and Rec Committee so we can coordinate our efforts. And then item 23 is continue implementing township's conservation strategy of preserving 30% of the township area. New open space signs, the manufacturer put them all up, and now we have a number of acreage ovals, so David either will or has contacted the Public Works employees to see if they can add the new completed acreage ovals to open space signs. We also had a volunteer from the Conservation Committee to do it himself, however, I think that would need Greg to get approval from the property owners before we go on their property. And then we discussed possible topics for the spring newsletter. One article emphasizing the priority areas that are desirable for open space, sort of advertise the areas that we're looking at to see if we get other people interested in preserving their property. And then also research articles from other counties on the Valley of Open Space and adopt some of those articles to our township. I think one of the most recent examples was Montgomery County. Lastly, we discussed 2023 objectives. Couple of them are, one is sort of prioritize member attendance at the six annual Conservation Committee meetings, get the acreage ovals on all the signs, and discuss newsletter ideas, and then we discussed ideas to advertise to remind residents about conservation via social media and possibly a booth at some of the township events. So our next meeting will be held on the third Thursday of an odd numbered month at 7:00 PM, and the next meeting then is on January 19th, 2023. That's all I have, and I wish everyone a happy holiday.
Thank you, Mr. Schrameyer. Are there any other questions for Mr. Schrameyer from either Hal or David?
I have none. I attended the meeting.
Okay, thank you. But one recollection that I think, if I remember the open space plan from, I think, 99 or 2000 when it was finally formulated, does include a list of the scenic overlooks and scenic views. One of those was right along BART Road at the bottom where BART, especially at the zigzag or Y where BART Road meets with Gold Mine Road, and we had several others. So we do have a catalog of the scenic vistas already in one of the documents, which is in the township someplace. To just help to fortify that idea that we've been looking at these locations, and we really do need to make these roads more effectful, let people recognize the great vistas and views we have of open space.
Okay, very good. So I'll entertain a motion for approval of the Conservation Committee report.
Submove, David Collingwood.
Second is Mr. Shermer.
All those signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you, gentlemen. All right, moving forward, the next up is the commission reports, and the first one on there is the Penridge Regional Police Chief Dickinson. How are you tonight?
I'm doing good, Mr. Kaiser. How are you doing?
Wonderful, thanks.
All right, I have November's 2022 Activity Report for the Penridge Regional Police Department. In the month of November, the police department responded to 771 calls for service. 330 of them were in East Rock Hill Township, 441 of them were in West Rock Hill Township. The department act also handled 32 traffic crashes. 15 of those crashes were reportable, 17 of them were non-reportable, with 18 of them being in East Rock Hill and 14 of them being in West Rock Hill Township. As far as our criminal activity goes for the month of November, officers handled seven Part 1 crimes, 41 Part 2 crimes, for a total of 48 crimes. Those crimes reported in the township of East Rock Hill was two thefts, two frauds, one criminal mischief report, one corruption of minors report, one sex offense against a minor, a narcotic, seven narcotics complaints, two DUIs, three harassments, and two dog law violations. As far as West Rock Hill Township crimes go, that we handled one domestic assault, three thefts, one assault, another regular assault, one fraud, a criminal mischief report, one sex offense, two harassments, one DUI, three disturbances, one disorderly conduct, two harassment complaints, five trespassing complaints, and one dog law violation. For the month of November for our crimes reported, we have three DUI charges, I'm sorry, criminal charges filed. We have three charges of DUI filed, one charge of rape by force, two charges of sexual assault, one indecent sexual assault, one criminal mischief, one arson reckless burning charge, five charges of drug paraphernalia, one dog law violation citation issued, one arrest for retail theft, two charges for receiving stolen property, four charges of narcotics possession, one charge of fleeing and eluding the police, two charges of assault, three harassment charges, and one trespassing charge, for a total of 29 charges in the month of November that were filed. The other activities for the police department, 198 traffic details were handled, enforcement details, 22 citations issued, 29 traffic warnings issued. We did 24 school checks, 115 park checks, two foot patrols, and 98 hours of training. So year to date, the police department has handled 8,196 calls for service, responded to 272 accidents. We handled 424 offense reports and filed 238 criminal charges, and year to date for ending the month of November, we attended 1,300 hours of training, and that would be the November Activity Report. I also like to take a moment, there we go. The police department would like to present this plaque in recognition of your 30 years of support to the police department in honor of your support and leadership to the Penridge Regional Police Department over the past 30 years. If you were not aware, this year was the 30th anniversary of the Penridge Regional Police Department, and the commission made a decision, along with the members of both township supervisors, to donate funds so that we could purchase 30th anniversary badges that the officers have been wearing all year to commemorate the 30th anniversary. So we took it upon ourselves to go ahead and have a plaque made up for both East and West Rock Hill to thank you for your service and thank you for your support of the department, because obviously we would not be here without your support or your leadership. So thank you very much, and to another 30 years, hopefully, at least.
Yes. Well, on behalf of the board chief, I would like to thank you for leading this department and doing such wonderful work that the regional police do for our township. This is a joint venture between East and West Rock Hill, and I would also like to thank and congratulate East Rock Hill on our partnership in this effort. It truly makes a difference. Thank you.
Welcome, thank you.
Chief, well done, David Collingwood. Thanks for everything you've done.
Yep, and.
You're welcome, David.
And thank you, chief, and congratulations to all our past, present, and future officers who have been here some 30, not quite 30 years, but have been serving the public very, very well for many, many years. Thank you.
You're welcome. We wouldn't be anywhere without the township, so without the hard work of the guys who work the shifts every day, so we appreciate your support. And everybody have a happy, merry, whatever you celebrate, Christmas, New Year, everything. So thank you.
Merry Christmas, Happy Kwanzaa, Hanukkah, whatever you celebrate. Thank you.
With that, I'll make a motion to approve the Regional Police Report as it was presented.
I will second.
Motion's been made in second. All those signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much, chief. Have a good evening. Be safe. All right, next up on that is the Joint Rec Authority. Mrs. Jan Dietz, how are you?
And actually, I'm going to be standing in for Jan because she is a bit under the weather. Dennis appointment and apparently concerns about COVID, so the quick summary is we have had third parties interested in working with us. We actually were able to find Mr. Stu Feldman, who was one of the guys who actually helped construct Holiday House Pool back in 69, 70, 71-ish, who knows the pool inside and out, who's going to be coming out to give us a bunch of hands. He and one of the board members, who is Mr. Kevin Dietz, who is very well experienced with municipal water and commercial grade water pumps, went through, looked over everything. The good news is we have figured that it looks like the pump is checked, it seems to be working. We need to change the sand media, the impeller looked to be okay, but the manifold, which is how you switch between all the different locations, seems to be okay, but we probably should be looking for a replacement because it's well beyond the meantime between failure times. We're looking at opening up for this spring. We have some other news and more interesting news, which is Faith Christian Academy has approached us with a contract that says, hey, we will help you guys get lifeguards, and we have some funding to have the pool used for Future Stars Day Camp. So we have third parties who are coming in looking at adding money, adding some investment into the property. And after Jan got done writing this up, I also found out that we have some other third parties who are interested in helping us out with the park and for using, possibly for using the parking lot and doing some of the upgrades and equipment for the electric and the rest. So we have a lot of interest, a lot of other people coming in, so hopefully many hands makes light work. We have the contract waiting, we have the contract which we have agreed to for using the Holiday House Pool for the day camp during part of the time. We'll still be having regular service, and that's about it for now. Mostly good news.
Okay, well, that is encouraging because of the attendance records and stuff that we've looked at, that Greg had compiled for us over the past four years. It didn't look very promising for West Rock Hill as far as the amount of season tickets holders that we had, and I might add too, Sellersville was was kind of lower than people from outside the area. So that is, that is an improvement of you reaching out and getting some other people involved that are interested in. I am hopeful that you may be able to gather up enough lifeguards, and I guess, you know, that's something that's very important here, because without the lifeguard, you can't open the pool, right?
That's, and actually, that's part of the reason why those numbers are skewed from last year, or actually last year, a year before, Quakertown was not able to open. So we ended up receiving a bunch of Quakertown lifeguards. We also end up receiving a bunch of Quakertown constituents who came down to Holiday House. I guess it's, essentially, it's a double edged sword. And one of the things that we did find, starting up for this year, is that we do have a pretty large reservoir of West Rock Hill residents who have moved in in the last three, four, five, six, seven, eight years who have the standard suburban home on the cul-de-sac, but do not have a pool. So we figured there are several hundred people who have families or several hundred homes which have flipped over, which have people living in them who may not know about this. And recently, going back through the email chains of Holiday House Pool, we have received a fair number of inquiries from the families who actually already have pools going, my kids, nephews, nieces, grandkids, neighbors' kids, we've got a pool, we want to see about getting them swimming lessons. So we have a pretty good feel that there's an untapped location where for many years, we haven't really been reaching out in the same way that Holiday House Pool reached out in the 1970s, 80s, 90s, even in the 2000s, and running through all the old paperwork, in the 90s, we had a huge number of people, you know, 800 subscriptions. So we're hoping we're going to get back to at least some of that simply by going back to all the people who have moved in and letting people who might not know about this facility to come in, and also marketing it to the park and rec boards for Holiday House, for Sellersville and for West Rock Hill. Now, we have a tot lot, we have open areas which are currently used as a de facto dog park. We have other playgrounds, and we have other facilities. We're right down the street from the elementary school. This is a great location for people to use even when it's not being run as a pool.
Correct. Okay, there was one, thank you for that. There was one question I had asked for before, and that was if if the the pool was to run on its own, other than what our normal contributions were, what would the price of the season tickets have to be raised to? Has anybody looked into that?
I know that Jan and Don Krautham will have those numbers in here. I know we have the proposed budget. We were looking at minor, at a small increase, but at this point, we are waiting to hear back from the consultants who went through so that we know how much upfront work we'd be doing. It looks like there will be an increase, but not a big increase. That's all, you know, we've been looking at the numbers and trying to arrange them to see how much is going to be too much, how much is going to be too little, and then trying to base them off of the competition in the area because we do have Menlo Pool, we have the Souderton Municipal Pool, we have Quakertown Pool, so we're looking at probably raising rates, but not, but by as little as we can because we have to essentially match the current going rate for the lifeguards, because as we found out last year, or this year actually still, if we don't have lifeguards, then we can't get going. Fortunately, the good news is, you know, when we get $13,000, we are able to spin that into a budget of like $165,000 to $175,000 for running the pool and paying everybody. We're going to, we think we're pretty close to getting the numbers to work, but I don't have the actual rates for individuals because that's also going to kind of float based on how many people we think we're going to get.
Right. Okay, well, I know if the season ticket holder has four applicants in that household there, and you only have 49 from West Rock Hill, you know, that's roughly 200 people out of 6,000 residents that use the pool. The other thing there that I looked at too, that I think is important, is when that feasibility study will be completed. I think that's in the process now, right? When that feasibility study will be completed, uh I think that's in the process now, right?
Yep, we have a, we have a essentially an in-kind donation from a very generous. Engineering facility or engineering firm who's going to be looking through, telling us what we need to do. And we've gone through and looked through. Unfortunately, we have similar plans from, I guess, two thousand and ten that were never really acted on. So we're going back to the two thousand and ten plan of what should we be doing and how much is it going to cost to do updates, and we went back. Uh it's actually in a, in the township Dropbox folder for Holiday House that we have the plans from back around two thousand and one, two thousand and two when. The YMCA came in and we had another comprehensive plan and review, and then there's one from, I think, nineteen seventy-five plus the initial one from seventy-one. So we're kind of looking through all the ideas we've had, we're seeing, we've had the same ideas over and over, but it's getting the implementation in, which is always. The difficulty, and that has been one of the things with, in one of the first metos back and forth between the attorneys. When they had just signed the option agreement to purchase the property is, how do we allocate the costs and benefits of Holiday House? Between the borough and the township, do we do this per capita, do we do this by the income from? Do we do this based on the budget, do we do this based on the number of people who are there, do we do it fifty-fifty? So this has been a longstanding question. Uh it's been forty-six years of debate back and forth. But I think we have a pretty good answer, which is we want to just advertise the heck out of the pool and get people to come and use it because we found a lot of people don't know about it.
Okay, well, you sell more tickets and it's better off for everybody, yes. Okay, I don't have any other questions. Mr. Collingwood, you have any questions for for Mr. Shermer?
I have none.
Okay, thank you, Hal. I would enter, I I'll actually make a motion to approve your report as presented.
I will second that, David Collingwood.
Okay, motion's been made in second, although signify by saying aye, aye.
I'm standing as I gave the report.
Motion carries, thank you. Okay, moving forward then, uh the next on the agenda is the tax collector's report. Suzanne Clark, good evening.
Uh Suzanne couldn't make it, so I will give the report. Uh Suzanne collected uh five hundred and two dollars and sixty-seven cents in annual taxes. Uh twenty-one dollars and sixty-four cents in two thousand and twenty-one interim taxes and thirty-five dollars and sixty-one cents in streetlight tax. Total left to collect from the uh twenty-two budget is three thousand nine hundred eighty-six dollars and forty-three cents. That's all that's outstanding left.
Okay, that's not bad. Pretty good. Thank you. Any questions on the tax collector's report?
I'll make a motion to approve the tax collector's report as presented.
Okay, questions, I will second.
Okay, motion been made in second, although signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Motion carries. Next on the agenda is the engineer's report, Mr. Bella.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um we have Veris Partners subdivision or land development or the warehouse project on Meeting House Road. Uh that uh was reported on earlier with by the planning commission. And I believe there's several representatives here tonight from the applicant, so maybe they could introduce themselves and. Uh do an overview of the project.
Uh thank you, Steve. Ryan Hahn with Veris Partners LLC. Um I've got with me here this evening Bob McCormick with Veris Partners, Greg Davis with Sal Ewing. Matt Chartran with Buller Engineering and David Babbitt with David Babbitt and Associates. Um Steve, is it okay if I share my screen?
I think so, Greg, yeah.
Yeah, I just stopped.
Sorry, just give me a second here.
Yep, no worries.
Okay, so can you see my screen now? I believe you can.
It's coming up.
Okay.
There you go.
So I believe you're all familiar with this project. This is the redevelopment of the drum construction site at the southwest corner of Meeting House and Climber. Um we've been, I guess we originally started this process about a year ago at this time. Um to Steve's credit, he's gone through eight reviews of. Of plan iterations in the development of this and uh three previous plan commission meetings. Um and I only mention that because I guess each of these updates has been an improvement to the overall plan from our perspective. Um so in terms of process here, I believe uh some, if not all of you were present at the previous plan commission meetings. Um but I'll just give a high-level overview um just to some of the bullet points here of the improvements uh proposed or where we left it at the last plan commission meeting. Um this is a hundred and eighty-five thousand square foot warehouse distribution use. Um the access currently is off of Climber Avenue, but will be off. Uh directly off Meeting House Road with this new plan. Um from the traffic perspective, this plan includes uh reconstruction and widening of basically the entire length of Meeting House Road from Climber all the way down to State Road. Um at the intersection of State Road and Meeting House, um we uh performed a signal warrant analysis and then also a right turn lane warrant analysis along with submitting our. Traffic study to PennDOT, um that has since gone through a few iterations with PennDOT. And the next step would be to submit our HOP plan for this right turn lane. Um that right turn lane analysis did, or warrant was triggered, um so we did commit to install that right turn lane. As part of this project, um and in conjunction with the Meeting House Road improvement, that's a little over four times the value of of just the frontage improvements along Climber and Meeting House on this property. Um as it relates to the traffic signal, our our traffic counts did not, believe it or not, uh trigger the signal warrant analysis at that intersection. Um we certainly recognize that that um could likely be uh triggered in the future, so in our last submittal here. Um in recognition that, we did offer a voluntary contribution towards that future signalization of that intersection, um once that warrant is triggered. And then from a utility perspective, uh we are extending uh fire service that currently terminates at that intersection at State Road and Meeting House, although. Basically, the length of Meeting House up to our north driveway, along with some additional hydrants on that road. On the property itself, um. Uh some of the other hot buttons here were in terms of perimeter buffering, um so our last update to this plan, uh we also. We have a continuous berm along the length of our auto parking lot, um and then rather than just the five-foot or five-and-a-half-foot board-on-board wood fence. Uh we did propose a uh sound barrier style fence that would be eight foot tall, not only surrounding the residential uses on Meeting House on top of that berm. But also along the perimeter of our pavement uh facing Climber. Um from an aesthetic impact, uh one thing we presented at the last plan commission was some additional options. We've got a fairly prominent retaining wall as part of our. Uh proposed plan facing Climber, but to use some larger modular block, ready rock system. Um just for, I guess, a little bit more aesthetic appeal on such a prominent feature uh facing Climber. And then lighting mitigation, uh we've gone through several iterations on that. Um we've always had. The traditional uh cutoff-style light lenses, light shielding, uh but we actually found a lighting control system that we've committed to that. Allows us to dim those exterior lights uh to twenty-five percent of their full brightness level, uh unless triggered by motion. Uh so that accomplishes not only our security goal, but uh but also limits those lighting levels during off-hours. Uh stormwater, uh Mr. DeSantis, who is on the property just to the north of us, and the basin was kind enough to. Uh tour his property with me and Buller Engineering and the Vogels um that are downstream of us to the south. Um at the self-storage facility were uh nice enough to speak to me about their concerns on the project. Uh as a result of those concerns, we added uh additional overflow capacity to our pond that faces, sorry, I'm going to pull up. A plan, the pond that's uh opposite uh Mr. DeSantis's property, we added an addition, additional eighteen inches, which accommodates another three inches of rainfall. Um beyond the regulatory requirement. And then the, one of the Vogels' main concerns was related to uh the operation of the spray irrigation system or or mainly what happens if that system is impaired. Uh we did review with our designer the ability to tie that into our our fire alarm system on the building so that that's monitored twenty-four, seven, three, sixty-five, so that we could. Immediately respond to an impairment um of that system should it occur in addition to the other redundancies built into the design. Uh we had one uh follow-up noted in uh Steve's letter from December fifth, um and it related, we had some back and forth regarding the parking lot shading requirement in our last plan commission meeting. Uh we did go back to the drawing board and submitted an updated plan here earlier this month uh. With the goal of uh adding additional plantings and uh reducing the heat island impact from this design. So three main items on that is our original design included a black EPDM roof membrane, uh which we subsequently changed to a uh white TPO, highly reflective roof membrane. Uh we changed some select pavement sections from black asphalt to concrete uh for additional light reflectivity. And then we ac- actually added um forty canopy trees. Uh we did have an opportunity, this is in a spray irrigation field, but. Um offer some additional buffering in addition to the landscaping benefit. Um this was as an area where we didn't have major utilities coming through, but uh offered a net benefit and and the additional plantings are shown in our new design. Um so that's, that's just a high-level overview. Like I said, I know uh you've heard our speak through this before, so I'd be happy to answer any specific questions or comments or we can. Walk through the review letter as you see fit.
Okay, uh are there any questions or or comments from either uh Mr. Collingwood or Mr. Shermer so far?
I will have some uh questions. I can wait until. We're finished with the review.
Okay, we're going to walk through the review then, Greg.
Right.
Uh Ryan, I'm sorry.
Okay. Um Steve, do you want me to take this or you want?
Um you can, but let me just set it up there first for a second, Ryan. Uh just so the board is aware, what what I did here, uh the plan itself. Has not changed per se, but this new letter uh was an attempt to go back through the critical comments. Uh list them all out clearly, identify what the planning commission's recommendations were and what offers that Veris had made. Which Ryan touched on a few of the the contributions and things, so uh it's it's not set up as your your standard just engineering item after engineering item. I s- I started with the waiver request. Uh item two has some additional ordinance issues that were, you know, questions throughout the process, and then uh it, you know, wraps up with some final engineering items, so. Our engineering comments kind of tag along with this, but there's no need to talk about, you know. Curb elevations and things, that that that's something we'll, we could handle with them directly. I, this letter is limited to, you know, the more action items in the development and and the uh. Important issues that were discussed over the the many months that we've been working on this project, but sure, Ryan, if you want to uh. Touch on these items, you don't have to read them for for, you know, exactly, but you could go through them.
Okay, well, certainly stop me if if I'm going through these too fast, but I'll start with your item one, Steve, which is the waiver request. Um the first item A is regarding off-site survey requirement. In the SALDO, uh we did agree to provide LiDAR mapping of off-site uh. Off-site property information uh versus doing physical field survey on off-site properties. I believe that was recommended for approval.
Correct.
Um item B, C, and D, I would kind of tie together. Uh this is related to cartway width, curbing, and sidewalk. This is along Climber Avenue. Um so what we proposed in lieu of improvements to the frontage, which is the the half width of uh Climber Avenue along the. Frontage where we're removing any access to the property, uh we included the full reconstruction of Meeting House Road. Um so those waivers related to us performing these additional off-site improvements all the way down to the intersection and the intersection improvements. And I I believe those were also recommended for approval.
Correct.
Ryan, uh David Collingwood, I I do have a question here. Uh in item one D, one D is in David. Um the question I have is, the I know there's no sidewalks proposed for Climber, sidewalks are proposed for Meeting House, and you're going to do that reconstruction. The question I had is to comment where sidewalk is not proposed to be extended to State Road, so you're going to take it. Down past the contracting services building, but you're going to stop and not go out the state road with the sidewalk. Given that there are other projects possibly pending at that intersection. We all know that Wawa is a possibility. If you have a workforce in this warehouse that may want to be walking to that convenience store. Would it not make sense to have that sidewalk, you're you're two-thirds of the way there, go all the way out the state road?
Yeah, I will tell you, it's it's not a cost issue, it's um adequate right-of-way as you go south of contractor services or existing right-of-way, so it's accommodating the the widening of the roadway there. Um we proposed the sidewalk along the two frontage areas along Meeting House, and then that ties into the contractor services sidewalk.
The concern I had is the fact that if you do have the workforce. Walking on that road and then you combine that with the amount of trucks that would be working, coming in and out of that warehouse at that intersection, it would be. From a safety standpoint, it would make sense to have that sidewalk go all the way to to that intersection.
I, the comment's valid, um I. I mean, we would have to explore how to, you know, whether that would, that would be possible. Again, it's not a, not a cost issue so much as it is just a availability of right-of-way.
It's a safety issue. All right. That was my, one of my questions.
Thank you. Uh Ryan, could I ask you, um would would, could that be looked into as far as the the uh availability of being able to have that done?
We can defer that waiver request until final approval and that would give them time to look into it.
Okay, thank you, Mary.
Thank you.
And I will uh chime in that I remember one of the uh, one of the trails plans actually did uh suggest having a trail along the southeast. Side of the Perkyaman Creek, either crossing over on the north side of three oh nine. Or uh possibly coming up and which would essentially connect with a trail at the end of Meeting House and then slide down the hill. Go under uh the three oh nine bridge over the Perkyaman Creek, so that might be a somewhat more important. Connection because then you get down to Meeting House and Meeting House Road is one of the ways of getting down to the uh proposed Liberty Bell Trolley Site. So that, that is a rather important connection.
Okay.
Nothing else.
Um the next item was item E, and this was regarding maximum slot side slopes. Uh we did present an alternative plan. Uh there are some three-to-one slopes. That I believe were reviewed from a technical perspective. Um. The alternate plan basically switched this trailer parking area towards the inside against the building and the drive on the outside. Um one negative on that uh compliant plan was that it would increase the height of the retaining wall facing Climber Avenue. So in our discussion at Plan Commission last time, it it was recommended to proceed with the the waiver for the three-to-one side slopes, um given the impact on the design. And Steve, I don't know if you have anything more to add to that. Uh we would provide a slope stability analysis, um the additional technical comments related to that.
No, I don't have anything, Dad. You represented it correctly. The planning, the planning commission's recommendation was to allow the three-to-one side slopes to permit reduced retaining wall heights.
Um the next item was related to entrance drive widths. The SALDO requirement is um thirty-foot wide entrance driveways. Um we're showing widened throats at each of these entrance driveways, and that's based on actual turning movements and turning templates as designed, so. To accommodate the safe maneuvering at each one of these entrances, uh that was. Uh recommended for approval as well.
Ryan, I have one question of concern on that, on that to- topic right there, the entrance area that you have shaded in red there. With the real wide throats, and that is the trees, the buffering trees that are out there along the road. For, from someone who operates a big truck that you were going to have in these areas, I find often that the trees are put too far out into the. Uh right-of-way area where you don't have, when the trees get bigger, you don't have this, the sight distance you need to be able to see if somebody's coming because it does take longer to. You don't have this, the sight distance you need to be able to see if somebody's coming, because it does take longer to, to, to. Move one of these big trucks out into the roadway than what it does a normal car. And I don't, I know you're probably just going off what the township's recommendation is, but I see one, two, three, four, I see five trees up along the road there that have concern of mine where the trucks. And I think there's two or three at the other end where the trucks go in and out. Where your entrances are.
Understood.
Is there anything that we can do, Steve, possibly look at that, you know? I know these trees are drawn here on the drawing of the canopies there, but I can tell you.
Yeah, we, we. We could certainly look at that, and I don't see any issue with setting that back further to. Eliminate that issue and still counting them as the required street trees. I, I think we could work that out.
Okay, thank you.
And then I guess just on that point, Matt, did you perform a sightline analysis on that as well, or can we perform that?
Yeah, we, so I was just gonna say, we can certainly add and show the, the clear sight triangles there at the driveways. To make sure that there's not gonna be an issue. Additionally, you know, in those types of situations, typically have a note that those trees would need to be limbed up so that there is sufficient. View, but I do understand coming from, you know, a truck height. Things are a little bit different looking out of a cab of, of a truck, so. I agree with Steve's comment as well, that if we can still count them as street trees but pull them back slightly, that would help to alleviate any concern there.
Yes, thank you. In a truck, in a truck, you're, you're up in the canopy of the tree. In a car, you're below the canopy. That's where you, that's where you find a problem with a, with a big truck when you're pulling in and out of a place like this. It won't happen right away, but once, once those trees are mature, that's when you're gonna have the issues. And by then, you're long gone.
Understood.
Thank you.
Item G here relates to the storm sewer, I guess two provisions of the stormwater ordinance. One is on the basin slope at the bottom, and the other is on the use of HDP pipe on the site, so. I guess the, the gist of it is the roof drainage on this building, the downspouts connect into normally HPE piping versus reinforced concrete piping. That's a, that's a typical standard, and then the basin bottom slope. That reduction is to comply with DEP or, or the BMP design requirements for these basins. I don't know if you want to add anything to that, Steve, but this is to be consistent with. I, I believe this is actually updated in your stormwater ordinance now, but.
Yes, the basin bottom slope issue is. Since been eliminated in, in the stormwater ordinance that we just had to update for DEP a couple of months ago. They're technically under the prior stormwater ordinance from when it was submitted. So I have, I have no technical issue with the basin bottom slope. The use of HDPE onsite only, we've done that for a few other commercial sites. The storm sewer that they're proposing in the right of way in Meeting House Road is all reinforced concrete pipe. For that, the planning commission did recommend that waiver as they have done on some prior sites.
The next item I, I started to hit on, and this related to the parking lot shading, so the ordinance requires thirty-five percent of the paved area to be shaded in this. As I mentioned, was to reduce the, the heat island effect and just. Buller put together this plan before as just to why this waiver is requested. It's not. It's not a matter of accommodating the trees themselves, but just. Accommodating trees over the pavement relative to the permitted industrial use. This is what a plan with thirty-five percent shading looks like. From a practical standpoint. Truck maneuvering, et cetera, on a truck court with this many trees or, or trailer parking. Just wasn't, wasn't reasonable. We did have some back and forth, and we were, I don't believe, I know, Steve, you reviewed that updated plan, but we did leave Plan Commission last time. There was no recommendation or, or. On this waiver request, but it was asked that we go back and look at alternatives to reduce the heat island impacts. Consistent with this ordinance provision. And so that's what I highlighted, that we added forty additional canopy trees on the site. Those don't necessarily contribute towards the parking lot shading. But along with the white roof membrane changing to. Concrete paving sections that are in lieu of asphalt. We actually had a lead consultant we're currently working with do an analysis as to the net effect versus the tree, tree planting plan shown here. And it was a significantly better heat island reduction for what we proposed with the roof and the concrete paving sections.
Okay. Were you, I share the, I do, I do share your concern as far as the trees being in the way of the maneuverability of the trucks and stuff as well, so. You know, I'm, I'm open to suggestions or anything, Steve, that could be done. Compromising.
Understood, and as, as Ryan just indicated, the, the planning commission did ask him to. You know, submit a revised plan, and that's, that's the plan that he's referring to now that came in subsequent to, to the planning commission meeting. Which includes those. These features were discussed at the planning commission, but it wasn't on an exhibit. Now, now they have an exhibit that, that shows the concrete and, and the white roof. I guess my question for Ryan is. With this alternate heat island plan, let's call it, are you still offering the contribution in lieu of the trees?
Yes, that's, that's a point I was, when we originally presented this waiver request, we still offered to offer a contribution to plant those trees elsewhere. In the township. We have added forty trees to this plan, but we didn't change our contribution offer from the original submittal. So that contribution is based on the, if the actual trees were, were put into the parking area.
I just want to make sure, Steve, that I understand. Are we deferring this because the planning commission hasn't seen that? That new plan or? How do you want to handle this? What exactly is the waiver that's being granted or the condition that's being imposed, since it's not anywhere in a review letter?
It's a good question. The planning commission, their recommendation was to have this plan submitted. Now we have it. I guess if the planning, if the board of supervisors are comfortable with that. That concept of using concrete and a white roof, I don't know that it needs to be deferred.
Have you reviewed the plan?
Yes, I have. Yes, I did review. Reference in this letter.
The plan information so that I can at least reference it?
Oh, it's, it's, it's in the letter. If you look at the second paragraph on, on the top of page two. The second paragraph references that, that plan, the heat island improvement exhibit EX three.
I meant like, like a real, like reference, like the date, the number is.
It's right to, yeah, I'll, I'll clarify it for you. It's there, but I'll clarify.
The one right above, okay.
Above I, the paragraph above I. I'll mark, I'll, I'll send you an email.
Steve, you would determine the fee in lieu of fee for the, for the fee in lieu of, in place of.
Yeah, it's already been calculated. It's, it's in the first part of eight, forty-nine thousand nine hundred and fifty dollars.
Thank you. Any questions or concerns from the other two supervisors regarding this request?
None from me. No, I, I understand. What's, what's being discussed?
Okay, thank you.
Nope, none from me. I was actually just looking through, I guess, this paragraph H, page eighty-three of our packet, so. That matches what was discussed at the planning commission meeting, so I don't have any further questions.
Thank you.
And the last item relates to the solid provisions regarding afforestation of the site. We did present at Planning Commission an alternative plan meeting that requirement, and it basically. Plants, tree whips in all the green areas of the site to meet that percentage requirement. There is an avenue to approve. Either, I guess we actually. Removed the waiver request and offered to either plant that per the alternative plan. Or to offer a contribution in lieu of. And that's at the discretion of the board of supervisors, so correct me if I'm wrong, Steve, but it was. Recommended the acceptance of the contribution, just in terms of practicality of, of planting those and maintaining those planting whips on the site.
That's correct. The, the planning commission agreed that it was not an ideal planting scheme to, to spread out the forested. Or reforestation around the site, and that would ultimately be a maintenance concern. So the planning commission did recommend the waiver with the contribution.
Right.
Yeah, one, one thing that I would just quickly add to that is one of the primary areas of a forestation that we had been. Designating is the area that now we are proposing to plant those, those full size. Trees, the forty plus trees that, that Ryan mentioned here, so, you know. In terms of that, we're, I think we're, we're getting a bit of both in this type of layout.
If there are no questions on that, section two of your letter, Steve, the. The revised site plan, we talked about item A here, this relates to the sound barrier fencing around the perimeter. I don't know if there's any action to be taken on this. It was just a commitment as part of that. Presentation.
I think the only action part of that comment is. There was a question at the planning commission meeting. Requesting additional information. Regarding the screening. Like the height of the fence and the wall and how that would screen the trailer storage area from the view of Climber. Ave.
So I, correct me if I'm wrong, and I believe he's on the line, but Tony Borgner raised that specifically from the. The homes to the west of Climber, I guess one thing I would. I would highlight there is that our. Our grade here on that truck side of the building, and this is for the property south, you can, you know, hopefully you can see that. We're roughly, you know, four oh five at the top of that, next to the quarry. Down to three ninety-two, three ninety-three at the truck court elevation. And then we've got a fence on the back of this retaining wall here on the back of that truck court just for fall protection. You know, a standard semi trailer is thirteen and a half feet high, plus or minus. So from that direction, just the grades alone will screen that. If there is a concern, I mean, we can look at doing a taller fence along. Along Climber, along that front edge of the trailer parking. We've got a little bit of engineering calculus to do there.
Yeah, I, I thought, I thought the concern was, was that the trailer parking area. Parallel to Climber, not necessarily the, the rear of the building trailer court.
Okay, and I'm just saying that this, this elevation. There's kind of a big. Height differential around the quarry there. I mean, as you get directly across that trailer parking area, yes, that, that is above the, the fence height.
Yeah, Ryan, can I ask you? The trucks that will be parking in these trailers maneuvering, will they have backup alarms?
I think they'll be required to.
Okay, so that would be a concern of mine as far as deferring noise up into the air too instead of out, so whatever the height of the fence could be. I would, I would, I would recommend that you make it as high as it could possibly. Steve, I don't know, what, what's the proposal, eight feet now?
Yes, and, and I think that this might be a good item to, to defer to final plan, and then they could, you know, provide additional information for the planning commission to look at.
That would be wonderful. Thank you.
We talked about the traffic analysis and the traffic signal warrant analysis in, in particular. And I believe that, Steve, you've highlighted it before, it's the peak hour traffic. That triggers that signal warrant. On across there, so that's been submitted to PennDOT, that scoping. Review has been done. And that's also been reviewed by McMahon, but that, that did not trigger that signal warrant analysis, but we did make an offer of voluntary contribution. Towards a future signal, one that's, one that's triggered by another development here. In recognition of the, the traffic impact we would have.
Ryan, David Collingwood, you're, you're at item two D is in David now, where are you talking?
He correct.
Yeah, he skipped over B and C.
I'm sorry, yeah, yeah.
Well, either now or whenever, I, I do have a, a question about that. And I'm, I'm, again, I'm thinking long-term development, long-term impact. Of that particular intersection. And I know that. Right now, no, no light is, is required. But a right-hand turn lane is, assuming. Assuming all the truck traffic is coming from Route three oh nine. But once you have. Development across the street on state road of another. Let's say business convenience store. If you have trucks coming out of Telford. What provisions are being made for a left-hand turn lane onto Meeting House Road? Because right now we have an issue, or we may have an issue with truck traffic. In that intersection for multiple reasons, for multiple businesses. So if you have trucks coming out of Telford, wanting to go left onto Meeting House Road. And now you put another business on that intersection, on that corner. One that may generate truck traffic. Sitting and idling while they run into a convenience store. Few years down the road, we're gonna have a mess there, and now's the time that we need to address that.
Steve, I let you speak to this as well, but I believe the township is looking at this holistically. I know that you have our background data. This was kind of the first of the developments to come through. I know we have the same traffic engineer as Wawa here. They have that background traffic information, and then each one of these will incrementally. Make the addition to that intersection as, as triggered by these, these traffic counts. Am I saying that correctly?
Yes, we're referring to is the holistic look. See, last month or month before, I kind of lost track now. The board had approved the Township Traffic Consultant McMahon Associates to do that over. That overarching review of the state road corridor intersections. As well as, at, at the time, we're also talking about the Lawn Avenue corridor intersections, but. I think what Mr. Collingwood is asking about. May be addressed in that overall. Review that McMahon is doing. Which I anticipate we would have that information back before we would have the final plan of this development. So if you're. If you're hesitant to, you know. Finalize what is happening at that intersection. I think we'll have more information from our own consultant prior to. When you would look at this as a final plan, if you want to defer that question.
I'm okay with that myself.
Right, I, I'm fine. I just wanna, I'd rather ask the question now than not at all, and then. Have so much development on that corner that. The intersection can't handle it because we didn't. Look at it. From ten thousand feet.
So what I'm hearing is that we'll defer. Analysis or evaluation of this particular comment until final plan approval, Steve?
Correct.
Thank you.
Steve, this is, this is Greg Davis. I have a quick question for you on that. Didn't PennDOT? Review this in connection with our. HOP submission? And determined that that right turn lane only was. Required?
And yes, but PennDOT was looking at your application only, not necessarily the. Multiple applications that the township has before them right now. So I think the board's concern is whatever, whatever you do at this intersection, we will, we'll coordinate with. The long-range plan for the intersection. And we don't exactly have the long-range plan tied down yet, but hopefully with the study that McMahon is looking at and. The other development, as the other development. Uh, the other development, as the other developments progress, we'll have that information shortly.
Right, I guess my only thought there, Steve, is, um, you know, if, if, if our. The additional traffic from our development didn't trigger the warrants for a signal, only triggered warrants for this right turn lane. Um, nothing's gonna change between now and final plan approval with respect to our traffic counts. And we're the first in. No one's gonna be, no one's gonna go jump in front of us. So those numbers won't change.
Greg, we're gonna defer it to final plan approval. So the board has the ability to look at its traffic engineers' input on this too.
Okay.
Cause we're not just gonna have the trucks turning left. You're gonna logically have fifty percent of your people who are working there coming from east, fifty percent coming from the west. They're gonna have to make that left turn just like the trucks do. And that's a difficult turn.
Apologize, I skipped over item B and C. Um, item B relates, it's just the. Uh, discussion on the acuity or the, uh, lighting control system we proposed at plan commission. I don't know that there's any action on that, but.
No, I think it's just we're noting that you're offering to install that system.
Um, item C, uh, cut fill calculations note that we'll have, uh. Approximately thirty-seven, twenty-five cubic yards of excess cut. Um, our intent here. Is to balance the site. Um, some of that is a, you know, more of a game time decision as we. Are able to determine how much rock swell there is as we're, we're placing fill on the site. But obviously, I, I think everybody would agree, Matt, you can chime in as well, that our intent is to, to fully balance this, this property. Um, to not import or export material.
Yeah, that's right. And we, we did, uh, review this information with Steve as well. Our initial calculation was. About double what is noted there in the letter. Um, but in, in looking at it a little bit more closely, there were some areas that we, were being double counted. Uh, so effectively, yeah, the, the three thousand cubic yards here. Is mostly based on an assumed rock swell. We did find some shallow rock in. A couple of areas that we've assumed that that's gonna be, you know, across, uh, a significant portion of the site. Our hope is that it obviously won't be. Uh, but it's, you know, a matter of, of inches. If you were to spread that material. Across the entire site, I think we said it was, you know, about a three-inch differential. Um, but again, our, our intent here is to try to balance it and we believe that we have, we have achieved that, uh, if not for the rock swell.
So Steve, this is, uh, information for the board, not necessarily a condition, correct?
Correct. Right, they were asked to, to balance the site as best as possible. They.
Got it.
On that analysis and the planning commission acknowledged that they did that.
Um, and then I'm going back down to item E on this. Um, this relates to discussion, um, with Mr. DeSantis across. Um, on the other side of climber from this property, uh, we provided the township a letter just of our proposed improvements. Those still have to be approved by, um, township engineer and conservation district, but the net. The net, uh, netted out is just increasing the height of the overflow elevation to add additional capacity to that pond. And then we were adding some sumps to the structures and I'll, I'll try and pull up an exhibit here. Adding some sumps to those structures, uh, that are under the roadway that go to his property just for ease of maintenance before it, before it gets there. So there's an outlet structure. This would have a two-foot sump at the bottom of it to catch any leaves or sticks or things like that. So this is, again, I think is just information for the board.
Yeah, it's information for the board, but.
Just information. It's information that requires the review and approval of Steve.
Right, so that, for, for your, your concern, Mary, that would be the, the approval of that, those stormwater modifications would be deferred to final plan.
Right.
Um, I'm moving on to item three, which were the, um, other open major issues, uh, you highlight here, Steve. Uh, final traffic impact study should be, uh, revised and resubmitted as necessary pursuant, uh, P A D O T review and township traffic consultant review. Um, I was gonna try and pull those up here on the call, but I believe our last letters were, you know, quote-unquote, clean at this point. Uh, the next step with PennDOT would actually be to submit the, the H O P plans for that right turn lane. And we need to confirm that, you know, those improvements are, are approved, uh, to advance that, that design.
Yeah, that, that was more of a catch-all if something comes up during the PennDOT reviews that you, you will need to address them.
And, and obviously that's a will comply, so.
It, it's. It's a will comply, but how does this play into waiting for McMahon's traffic? Study that we're deferring to final approval? How did, how did those two concepts tie together?
Yeah, I believe you're correct, Mary. They, they would tie together. To, to depending on if, if McMahon found something that we were not expecting that might require some modification to the study.
Um, item B is final design plans for street improvement, including off-site improvements as discussed above, should be submitted for detailed engineering review. Um, that's understood and will comply. Um. There've been a, a few additional updates to the, to areas of the road section on Meeting House Road and we owe you a detailed. Design plan for your review. Um, item C is regarding the ultimate right-of-way dedication on Climber Avenue and Meeting House Road. I don't know if there's, that's understood. I don't know if there's anything further you need from us on that, Steve.
No, it's just a condition that'll follow along.
Okay.
Ultimately, we'll need legal descriptions.
Um, item D, it appears the significant amount of excess topsoil will remain. After restoration of all disturbed site areas, topsoil is not permitted to be exported off-site without prior approval of the township. Um, certainly our, our intent would be to, uh. To leave that material on site, but. Or to balance the site, I.
So welcome.
I don't know if there's.
Yes.
Yep.
From my perspective, you can take away the fill, but you leave the topsoil. You have to, you have to get rid of material, get rid of fill, leave the topsoil.
Yeah, that's, that's what, uh, I was just gonna note the same, that we would keep the topsoil and stockpile that on site. Uh, any, you know, structural fill underneath is what we would get rid of.
Right, you have some birmingham, so you could, you know, you could go heavy on the topsoil on some of the birmingham that. That you're proposing.
Thanks, Steve.
Um, final stormwater management reports should be revised and resubmitted as necessary for final plan modifications. Um, understand that as well. Uh, recreation land dedication or fee in lieu is required. Um, that's understood and, and acknowledged.
Well, you're, you're not proposing to dedicate land, right? So it's the.
Correct.
Is the board comfortable with a contribution in lieu of dedication of recreation land? I guess is the question.
From my perspective, I am. Uh, Mr. Collingwood or Mr. Shermer, are you okay with that?
I'm okay.
Okay.
I agree.
Thank you.
Um, item G, verification of final approval should be received in writing from T B A for. Uh, proposed public water service design and domestic and fire water service supply. I would tell you, correct me if I'm wrong, Matt, but this goes along with H as well regarding the sewer, sewage facilities planning module. Uh, both water and sewer have been reviewed by T B A. I, I know they've signed our, our suing sewer planning module exemption. And I believe that's, um, in the township's court right now. At, at the time you wish, you know, act upon that, uh, signing that sewage facilities planning module.
It's a will comply, right?
Correct.
Okay, next.
Yeah, and just to clarify, the, the township policy has been to hold planning modules until there's some level of approval to plan, so. Assuming, uh, you get a recommendation for preliminary plan approval, then the township would move ahead with that planning much.
So that takes us to I.
I was, I think they're both, next two are, are both will complies, right? So we need an N P D S permit and we need a, um, financial security agreement with the township. So we're not quite there yet, but when we get there, we'll certainly provide those.
And the last one is just the leftover engineering.
I'm sorry, Steve.
I was gonna say, yeah, the last one is the leftover engineering drafting comments from our prior review and. Sure, they're.
My question with that is if I take this letter. And combine it with your August fourth letter to do a resolution, have I captured all of the conditions? Not just the important conditions?
Because they're essentially all important conditions, uh. Uh, what, what happened is between the, just for clarity, between the August and this letter, there was a lot of discussions about. You know, the policy of, of the waivers and, and what was being accepted, so. It, a, a lot of what was in the August fourth letter has all been condensed. Yes, I. I'm just looking at this now and I think we cover all of the issues from August fourth as they have been modified over the last couple of months.
Do you think you could go through that August fourth letter? Not necessarily with the board and at this meeting. But for me and just hand-mark it up to show which ones need to remain as conditions and which ones have been satisfied.
I could certainly do that.
Thanks.
Where are we at now, Ryan?
I believe that brings us to the end of the letter.
Right.
So you are taking preliminary plan approval based on what was discussed tonight, is that correct?
Correct.
And as, as the township process has been to, uh, if the board is inclined, uh, to do that. Uh, you would authorize the solicitor to prepare the formal resolution that would be acted on at your next meeting.
And Greg. We don't require an agreement to accept conditions here, but we will ask for a letter from you indicating that the. Conditions are acceptable before you're placed on an agenda for consideration of the resolution.
Okay, great. Thank you.
All right, I guess we're at, we're at that stage, right, Steve?
Yes.
Okay, any, any comments or concerns from either Mr. Collingwood or Mr. Sherman before we entertain moving forward here?
Yeah, you just don't wanna make a motion tonight. You're just giving me casual direction.
Casual direction to perform.
To prepare preliminary approval resolution.
Okay.
Agreed.
Yeah, I, I've attended all the, uh, planning commission meetings going back over the last year with planning commission, Ferris and. I certainly commend the planning commission and their efforts and, and, and Ferris as well. You, you, they've really, um, worked hard. To sometimes go above and beyond to satisfy some of the things that, uh, we were asking for as a township, so.
Okay.
Having been part of the process for over a year, I'm, I'm good with it now.
Appreciate your saying that, Collingwood.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, Mary.
Thanks.
You got it.
Get it done.
Okay.
Do I have to formalize that, uh, in a motion that we're asking? Okay.
No, no, but you, I don't want it to pre-perceive that you've taken action on the plan before you adopt the resolution.
Thank you very much. Appreciate that.
That's all I have for my report unless there's any other questions from the board.
I have none. It's been a lengthy one there, Steve. Thank you very much for your time. Uh, and I will entertain a motion for approval of the engineer's report as presented.
So moved, David Collingwood.
And seconded out, Sherman.
Motion's been made in second, although signified by saying aye.
Aye.
All right, very good. Moving forward, next on the, on the, uh, agenda here is the, uh, solicitor's report. Mary Everly.
I was gonna have a lot of really interesting and fun things to talk about, but Steve used up all my time, so I don't have anything to report.
Okay. Thank you. All right, moving forward then, since we have no report from the solicitor, manager's report is up next. Mr. Livicott.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, the first item is Wawa's request for twenty-four hours operation. At last month's meeting, the board of supervisors asked me to reach out and contact, uh, the neighbors and report back to the board. You have a email in your, uh, packet and I'll briefly go over what the resident said. I spoke to Dennis Fensale. Yes, he guessed it's okay. Rather see a cemetery or solar panels, but overall it's okay. He would rather not see it twenty-four hours a day. He would like to keep it from seven A M. to eleven P M. I spoke to Aaron Preston. His concern is the volume of people. It's going to bring into the area and will bring his property value down. Concerned about the noise. It's a rental property for him and he does not want to lose tenants. He's also worried about, uh, being forced to connect to public water. However, it's better than the other uses that are permitted. He's on the fence. And figures it's the best solution for that field. Uh, I spoke to Bob Blum, who supported the new plan. It's the best alternatives to other uses. I also spoke to Alvin Landis. He did sign the Wawa petition and he's okay with it. Curious about the entrance. He does not want to see an entrance on Old Mill, on Old State Road. Uh, he will inform Mrs. Landis to call me if she would like to add any more comments, uh, which I did not get a phone call. I also spoke to Rich Souter. Does not have strong feelings either way. He's concerned about the traffic. Please push for a traffic light. Wawa would serve us as well as any. Those were the comments that I received from, uh, the residents that abut the property.
Well, it sounds like, uh, they're, they're basically some of our concerns that we've been identifying, the noise, um, after hours. Time between eleven and six or whatever it may be, uh. And also the traffic light is definitely, you know, an issue, a big issue. Uh, I will share my, one of my concerns and I did share, I did bring this up last meeting is, is the amount of parking that's proposed from. You know, I visit Wawa's from Maryland to, to Delaware, to New Jersey, Pennsylvania, all around. And I, I just see a shortness of parking and, and, and I'm not gonna say tractor trailers. Because we're not, they're not proposing tractor trailer parking. However. You cannot deny and get away from landscape trucks with trailers mowing. And these trailers can be fully enclosed, twenty-six feet long. Uh, just the other day, I went up three oh nine in the new Wawa there at, uh. Through Cooper'sburg. And there was, of course, there was a tractor trailer in there, but there was six landscape trailers in there. And four, four to six people in each vehicle, truck getting out with going in. And then there was, uh, P P and L trucks. There was four, four utility trucks there that were parked there, so. I don't think there's enough parking on this, on this location for that kind of, for that kind of use. I, I anticipate that you're gonna have that kind of use there because you're at, you're at one fifty-two and three oh nine. And, and State Road, so. Um, their other, the other concern I do have also is, is the advertisement that's on these speakers of, at the gas pumps. Who the heck wants to listen to that stuff at after hours? Uh, that should be something that should be thought about from our board members, you know, if we do move forward with the twenty-four hour request. Uh. They have done some things to, to accommodate the township as well. And I'm not saying that, I, I do believe that. Wawa's do operate twenty-four hours. You mean, it's almost a given that that's what they do than where they are. But I do think that there are some things that need to be addressed here as far as the amount of parking that's here. When? When trash trucks come to get trash with backup alarms beeping, I don't, I do not support that happening between the hours of 11:00 and 6:00 AM if we do allow 24/7. So those are, those are my concerns. Mr. Collingwood or Mr. Sherman?
Yeah, I'd like to jump in. I had, I actually have a list here and you kind of stole my thunder on a few of them, but our residents have to come first. And I know we've talked to seven neighbors and we've gotten feedback from probably five, maybe six. But it's just not the people that live next to this proposed facility or this convenience store. My list included the speakers that you talked about. They're annoying sometimes, noon time when you're pumping gas and these things are just so loud. And there's two sets of speakers, there's a set of speakers on the, on the pump itself where all the commercials come on to buy this or buy that. And then there's also the piped-in music that's on the post that surrounds the canopy for the, the gas pumps. Lights is the second one, lighting, and how we're gonna diffuse the lighting for the area for the neighbors. Deliveries, whether they're occurring at 12 noon or 2:00 in the morning, we have to control that. We have to control truck, or trash removal. As you said, Mr. Kaiser, these trucks backing up with these alarm systems 2:00 in the morning. And the biggest one on my list is again, truck parking. Cause I know it's gonna happen, it's gonna occur on State Road, they're gonna park their trucks and run into Wawa. And I just, that whole intersection and this whole thing, just I have so many concerns about it. So these are the things that were on my shortlist, and there may be more that we have collectively have to come to some sort of agreement on before we move forward with an approval for 24/7 operation. My concerns.
Okay, thank you. I will share something, you, you made a comment regarding deliveries. I see deliveries being done all day long at, at multiple Wawa's throughout my travels, and, and they're not limited to overnight. There's, there's yellow hash lines in the back of Wawa's and there's yellow hash lines on the side sometimes where the delivery trucks can park, and they, and they have an area to operate, to unload trucks, whether it be a Coca-Cola truck, Pepsi truck, you know, the Martin's potato roll truck, you know, breads, stuff like that, supplies. So there is, so there is, there is deliveries that are made to Wawa's quite frequently during the day. Because I do, I work during the day, 6:00 to, or 6:00 AM to 2:00 PM. So Mr. Sherman, do you have any concerns that, that you may want to identify that we haven't discussed yet?
Well, you guys hit most of them, the one that I did think to mention is the fact that this is gonna be the Wawa, which you guys kind of touched on, but this is gonna be the Wawa in our industrial district, so we have to plan for the drivers who are driving commercial and industrial trucks to stop at the location of the convenience store in the area where they're working. Which makes this a little bit different, it's not just gonna be sampling your average highway traffic, this is gonna be sampling the traffic that is in an industrial area, and most of the people who work in industry are driving something which is bigger than a car. It may have a trailer, it may have a box body, it may be a tri-axle, but this is gonna be pulling in some larger trucks, and if they can't, that's the problem, as David said, if they can't find parking, then they're gonna be pulling on the shoulder, then that quickly becomes a big problem, especially with that intersection.
Right.
Nothing else.
Okay, thanks. Well, it is, it is a concern because when, when the Wawa's built and they're gone, the only people that are, are left to, to take the blame will be the township. And, and that's why I do believe it's important, Michael and Julie, to, to address these issues or at least look at them before we do, you know, finalize things, but I can tell you from someone that does see quite a few Wawa's throughout your area, and I know that Wawa is a, is a great store, is a good business model. We have to plan for what's best for the township as well, and, and how our citizens will be affected by this, by this store. And, and the workers that are in our township as well.
Absolutely, we absolutely understand your concerns, and this is Julie Von Spreckelson from Eastburn and Gray on behalf of the applicant. I'm gonna turn it over to Mike Cooley at this point, and he will address those comments that you did make. Mike?
Great.
Okay.
Great, Julie, thanks so much. Gentlemen, first I want to just say thank you so much for giving us the time to discuss these very important issues. I want, I want you to rest assured that, you know, our priority is addressing all of these concerns, obviously not only with you, but with all the neighbors and, and the entire community. So I think all the points that you made are more than valid, and I think we're prepared to address every single one of them in, you know, to show our willingness to make this the best project we can for the community. You know, we, you know, I took notes, we went through the list, I totally agree, there's, it's easy, these are easy issues to, to address as far as silencing the, the speakers at the fuel pumps. I don't, I don't disagree that it could be a nuisance to neighbors in close proximity. We can easily put limitation on truck delivery hours and trash pickup to not be a nuisance to the neighbors. We're not gonna offer any high-speed diesel fueling to, as none of the Wawa's do, to not accommodate the much larger oversized trucks. You know, we're obviously working on the buffering, we've worked on the buffering plan to, to make it as much green space as possible. You know, as far as oversized parking, I think we can easily address this, but it is an issue that we have to be a little delicate about because we don't want this to turn into a truck rest stop. But I think we can find ways to, you know, we have a lot of room on this site. Obviously, we have the whole, you know, rear half of the parcel, perhaps we could come up with a design to accommodate, you know, several more kind of oversized vehicles such as land, landscape trucks and things of that nature. You know, traffic, obviously we have our traffic consultants that will put together the traffic studies and address any, and mitigate any potential traffic impacts, whether that involves a signal or not, we can certainly address that. We actually have our lighting engineer on the, on the, on the call with us tonight if we want to discuss any specifics in lighting. But we're always very sensitive to neighbors in close proximity about making sure we design these light levels to not only be in conformance with the ordinance, but to protect those neighbors in close proximity where there's no, you know, direct light shining in their windows. And we're designing this with the downlighting and, and shields if we have to, to protect those neighbors. So we're, we're open to, to all these, all of these items to address. Wawa wants to be a great community neighbor, we'd love to be part of this community, and we're, we're open to working with, with you, with staff, your, your consultants, to make this the best project for everybody.
And Mike, can you just touch on the deliveries, limitation on delivery hours as well as the trash?
Absolutely, absolutely. You know, and these are, these are easy items, Wawa controls their delivery hours. Other than fuel, you know, fuel is delivered on an as-needed basis. And the good thing about fueling trucks is they come in and they, they turn their engines off. It's a gravity-fed system, so there's no noise when they're, when they're fueling the underground storage tanks. But as far as store deliveries, you know, we can absolute, absolutely control those hours. We can put limitations on it if we want to cut it off at say, you know, 11:00 AM and not come back before 6:00 AM, things of that nature. We can do the same thing with trash pickup, you know, make it, you know, not before a certain time at night, in, in the morning and, and not after a certain time in the evening. You know, Wawa does control those, those deliveries and trash pickup. So that's, these are, these are easy items for us to address with you.
Okay.
I have a question.
Go ahead, Mr. Collingwood.
And this is not relative to anything we've talked about here this evening. Will this store, if it's approved, are you planning to serve, I'll say alcohol beer? As we do see in some of the convenience stores where they have.
The answer that is yes, Wawa's business model, like most grocery stores now.
Well, I'll take this moment while he freezes to note that I don't think that's permitted in our zoning ordinance, so you'd need a variance.
Okay.
Okay, that's noted.
Thank you for, for identifying that, Mary.
Okay, thank you.
Greg, am I right about that?
I'd have to quick look it up.
I thought we looked at this before in the beginning when they first came in.
I thought we did too, but I believe you are right.
All right, well, let's make sure she's right, okay? Thanks, Greg.
Okay.
So it sounds like we're gonna work towards a decision based on some conditions.
Conditions and changes, yes.
All of which have not been necessarily identified this evening because, you know, I, I just, the list may get longer.
I apologize, guys, since my, my connection went out.
Yep, we hear you now.
Sorry about that.
Can I see you?
We resolved everything without you, so it's fine.
Thank you.
So I believe what we're saying is that we agree with every one of these conditions that you want to place if you're so inclined to extend the hours of operation.
Alex, have a comment?
Does that include an irrigation system for the buffering? So the, so if it dies later than 18 months, or it prevents dying later than 18 months? Is that something that Wawa would consider?
Absolutely, yes, yeah.
Oh, I've heard, our ordinance says that this is obviously a concern, so I've heard some of the, some of the neighbors' concerns, I know we have our own concerns, so it's a question of balancing the changes with the benefits, and then trying to figure out which things are benefits and which things are just a change, which we can't really do much about. So I don't have any more, I do not have any questions.
Okay, thank you. Michael, you, did you hear us when we were discussing, I think you were having some technical difficulties when we were discussing the fact that you may have to go for a variance in order to sell beer in your store?
I did not hear that, I'm sorry.
Okay, we're checking on that, I think Greg's checking for us, just to confirm that for sure, as part of our zoning ordinance.
Okay.
You need to be aware of that.
Okay, thank you for, thank you for making us aware of that.
Mr. Chairman, I have another question, if I may.
You may, go ahead, Mary.
You mentioned silencing the speakers.
Yes.
Is that a 100% silencing of the speakers? Don't, or don't they need to be there in the event of an emergency?
Well, I think if I can address that, if, if I may, I think there's, there's two, two different kinds of speakers. One is they, they have like advertising at the pumps, and the other one is an emergency system, if there's a, if, if there's an incident, you can communicate with inside the store in, in the case of an emergency. I think what we're talking about is limiting the advertising at the pumps, am I correct?
That was my view.
Yeah.
That was my, my opinion, yes. Because you do have those second set of speakers way up high on those hosts that hold the canopy. And I think that's the speaker system that generates conversations within the store, not, not the TV screen that blares those commercials out.
Right.
Correct.
So, yeah, I'd say the same thing along the, the lines of, of everything else to not be a nuisance. We can certainly limit those hours, or we can work with you to see what times are appropriate, what times are not.
All right. Well.
I'm looking at my manager.
Input from the board on that, what times do you think are appropriate to have advertising?
Sorry, I was looking at, looking at the origin, it's trying to find the alcohol, what was the question?
Mary asked the board question, right?
Right, assuming that you're gonna direct us to go back and come back with a resolution with conditions to address these things and, and and address the, the request for 24-hour operation. I would just kind of, he was saying that we'll work on, you know, times when advertising at the pump is appropriate, is that right? Is that what you said, Mr. Cooley?
Absolutely, and also, I mean, I, I don't know if, you know, most municipalities have a noise ordinance. We would certainly be in compliance with a noise ordinance all, all the time, right? So we wouldn't want to violate that. And if you feel that, that, you know, additional measures need to be taken, taken, we're certainly open to that as well. So I, I don't, I don't have an opinion as to what's appropriate, it's really what you believe is best for the community, Mary?
I have, I have an opinion myself from, from being a property owner and, and a citizen of the township, and somebody that tries to respect neighbors' rights. And that, and that is, from my perspective, I don't believe there should be any advertising from the hours from 10 o'clock until 7:00 AM. That's my opinion.
Okay, and that's.
Now, that's, there's three board members here on this, on this board that are supervisors.
And, and I, I don't think that's unreasonable at all, I, I totally agree.
All right, Greg, did you get a chance to look and identify for sure about that, the needing a variance to sell alcohol?
I think they're gonna need a variance for to have tables inside and outside. I do not think you're able to get a liquor license without tables, are.
They're not.
Right.
That's correct.
Yeah, we don't regulate alcohol.
We regulate tables.
Understood.
All right, so you got that, that you can make a note to, for sure. Mary, you would be preparing, if you prepared something with, with the allowance of operating 24/7, you would have to prepare something with these conditions that we would like to see in place, as well as the, the added parking for landscape trailers or something like that, of that nature. Buffering, the irrigation for the, for the plantings, for the buffering.
Right, so the categories that I have, and this is, I think what I'm hearing and what I envision is that we would have a meeting or a virtual meeting with the applicants shortly after the new year to come up with conditions that work for both sides, and we would forward those conditions to you for your review, you would make comments to us, and if all goes well, there'd be a resolution in front of you at your January meeting.
Okay.
And so the categories that I have are lighting, speakers, deliveries, truck parking, garbage pickup times, replacement of vegetation, and irrigation system. So, and I, and I wrote down Wawa's responses, so we'll get something to you. What are you looking at, Greg, that? I said something wrong? No.
You're fine.
No, I think the list is good, but I don't think it, it should be limited to just what we, you just mentioned, that we may throw a few other things in there, you know.
All right.
Other things.
Yeah, if you think, then just email Greg.
Right. Thank you.
Yeah, agree, we might have brainstorm after not thinking about this for a little bit and go, oh, we should have thought of, which is always a possibility, but we'll let you know.
Okay, thanks.
All right, so everybody from the supervisor board members are comfortable with what we have discussed tonight so far?
Good discussion.
And so the applicant, I'm sure, is looking for a little bit of idea. And then the idea would be if we, we iron out these conditions, you would approve a 24-hour operation, correct?
I would be comfortable myself if these conditions were ironed out.
Yes.
David?
I agree.
Okay, Mr. Sherman?
I agree also.
Okay, just wanted to, to make sure we were clear on that, I don't want to going off in a direction that you don't approve.
Yes, and that does also include, Mary, them still having to go for a variance on the, on the table issue.
Yes, and that does also include, Mary, them still having to go for a variance on the, on the, uh, table issue, which you already know about.
That's correct.
Yep, separate issue.
Okay, thank you. So, may I ask one question? You may. What, or, or any of the board members opposed to us getting a variance for the tables? I'm not weighing in on that, because I don't want to influence the, the, uh, the zoning hearing board one way or another, because they may want to listen to this, that's up to them, what they decide. Okay, thank you. What else we have?
But I think with Wawa, we're, we're done, right? For this evening?
Yes. Mary? You have direction?
Yeah, I, I believe that we do, but it's going to be something that, that takes the applicant and the township staff working together, so.
Correct.
Yeah. We don't expect to see this back until you have things ironed out and, and.
Right, sounds good, thank you.
You got it, thank you. Okay, thank you, everyone, happy holidays.
I thank you.
Appreciate it.
Travel safe.
Bye-bye, thank you.
Yep. All right, Greg, what else you got?
Uh, the board would, uh, asked at the last meeting for an update on the hybrid meeting room. Um, so in your packet is the quotes and a memo. A hybrid meeting room will take thirty-two thousand dollars to upgrade the township meeting with new cameras and audio systems and a projector or television. This project will take three to four months to complete.
Supply, supply chain issues, right?
Yeah, it's, it's more or less supply chain excuses, it's not that they're that busy or that, it's just ordering everything, everything to come in and then get to, um, get to the township to set it up.
And what does that give us?
What that will give us is a new audio system, it will give us a new, some way to, uh, to put in, um, uh, video, where that would be two cameras, it would also be, um, besides the two cameras, a television or a projector. Uh, it would be new microphones, and it would be a system to record and cast these meetings for a hybrid type meeting system.
And what would it give us as far as attendance?
Well, I'm going to get into that, that's, that's, that's in a second, I have that.
Okay.
Uh, also, um, there are three, uh, municipalities that, uh, have used this company, one of them is Duales Town Borough. The other one's Duales Town Township, and the other one's Lower Providence Township. Those are the three, in your packet, there's links to their YouTube pages, so you can hear the quality of their sound, um, in their recordings, and there's also a link to our old, uh, system, or our current system that's in our meeting room, and the board can compare that. Uh, currently, the township can hold, has fifty-two seats. That is seven supervisors, uh, staff, board of supervisors, and planning commission. Uh, six, uh, committee, uh, people for the planning commission, leaving thirty-nine people for the board of supervisors and forty-five seats, uh, for the P C members for applicants and public. With this new system of Google Meet, uh, it can hold another five hundred people to attend our meetings. So not only when we have a hybrid meeting room, we could have thirty-nine to forty-five people is, as the public, but we can also admit another five hundred people to the meeting room virtually. So that not only people that, uh, can be there, but also people that would have to travel long distance or anything like that, they could still be in the meeting. However, it would be remote.
Okay.
So that is kind of an update, the board would then have to decide when it would be okay, uh, when they would want to move forward. And, uh, that is something that is in the budget for, uh, next year.
Well, from my perspective, Greg, I want you to move forward immediately. Because I think that we should be getting back to in-person meetings, and I think that this, this will accommodate, uh, the availability of having people that don't wish to be in the, in-person meeting or can't because of the shortage of seats. I think that's a big, I think that's a big key. I do believe that, you know, in this case, when the seats that we have are going to probably be first come, first served. And, uh, whoever's, doesn't fit in the room would probably have to be hybrid, or, or, or go on, go on the, uh, uh, video part of it. That's my opinion.
Yeah, I, I do have an input, I, I would like, uh, as part of the process of moving forward, weather permitting, I think we should, uh, make an attempt to physically go look at some of these other townships that have implemented this and physically look at their equipment and see their room and, and I, I mean, I know that there's links there, we can sit here and listen to it, but I'd still like to go talk to the people and, and, have a follow-up discussion with them on the, the good and the bad, and I think that would help us make our decision.
That's fair, yep, that's fair. Hal?
Uh, no, I do, I do like the idea of the hybrid meeting, I know that having the the ability for people to come back and look at the meetings afterwards, and the ability to, uh, attend a meeting if you are somewhat far away is good for the consultants, for the engineers, for the solicitor, and for other people, so, uh, the more people, the more people who are able to participate in the meetings, the better off we are.
One thing that I would like to add is that it has been a long time since the audio, audio visual has been updated in the meeting room. Um, I've been with the township over fifteen years, and I think it's been twenty years since the audio and video has been updated in the township meeting room. So you're due to do this sooner or later, anyway.
Yeah, I don't think our, our audio has ever worked really well. Because I used to sit in the back row and complain, so. Um, yeah, I agree.
I, I do remember that, Mr. Collingwood. I can't believe it's been twenty years since they put those little mics at the top.
Yeah.
So if the board wants to give me authorization to proceed, I can proceed, or we can wait till next month after we visit some, um, some of those municipalities.
I'm, I'm, I'm fair withholding off till next month, so that, so that somebody could visit another municipality. That's a fair request, okay?
Yeah, that's good, and I said weather permitting too, because we're going to get into some ugly stuff here, but we'll, yeah, we'll try to move.
Greg, would you, would you find, um, making available to the supervisors, um, the, the nights, the dates of the meetings and the times of those other places that have this setup? Or you have that already right on there?
Uh, sure, I, well, it would, I would have to look that up, but it's, yeah, you know, Duales Town Borough.
Yeah, you can get them, get them to us whenever you can. Next one on your agenda there, I think you have, oh, that's a big one. Right?
Yeah, the next item is the budget, let me see here. Okay, the twenty-twenty-three budget. Uh, we advertised it, it's up for adoption tonight, I'll go over some of the highlights in the twenty-twenty-three budget. Four hundred ninety-eight thousand, four hundred and ten dollars will be allocated for road repair. In two thousand twenty-two, two hundred and eighty was budgeted, uh, two hundred and eighty thousand, sixty-six dollars. The Holiday House pool is still budgeted for thirteen thousand, as it was in twenty-twenty-two. The police budget is, uh, proposed to be one point two million, fifteen thousand, seventy-five dollars, compared to one million, one hundred and seventy thousand, eight hundred and twenty-seven dollars. Uh, as spoken before, thirty-two thousand dollars of ARP money is budgeted for the hybrid system. And the Penrins Senior Center is budgeted for a twenty-five hundred dollar donation. Now, that's for twenty-twenty-three, you guys, uh, allotted twenty-five hundred dollars in tonight's meeting for twenty-twenty-two.
Correct.
Right.
And I would just need a motion for you to approve the budget.
Okay. Do you two gentlemen have, uh, any other questions, or are you comfortable with it? Shall we move forward?
I will make that motion, David Collingwood.
Okay, motion's been made.
I read through it, uh, several times, I will second.
Okay, motion's been made, second, and I will also, um, ask for indication by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye. You have it, Greg.
Thank you.
Thank you. And I might add, Greg, that, that's with no tax increase.
Yes, I'm sorry, I did not say the most important.
That's important, that's important to the, to the taxpayers, there is no tax. And that budget didn't increase, by the way, from, uh, from what it was, but there is no tax increase.
Correct. The next item I have is, hold on, I have to move this forward one, is, uh, Vera Cole resignation from the Conservation Committee and authorization to advertise. I'll briefly give you a synopsis of her letter that she wrote, uh, she wrote, "I am so grateful for all I have learned working with the Conservation Committee, the conservation efforts and success of West Rock Hill Township, I believe are among the finest. It has been a great honor to play a small part in this legacy of nature and goodwill that will be left for future generations. I thank each person of the committee members for their friendship to me and that all I have learned from them. And thank you for their generous and enduring contributions of the time and talent of our township. I've learned a lot from you and your wise counsel and good guidance of the township affairs. I plan to attend the public part of the conservation meetings when I'm available, and I'm glad to volunteer as the committee deems helpful and appropriate. Kind regards, Vera Cole."
Okay. Well, thank you, and we thank her. She is, Vera, thank you very much for your time and efforts that you put in to this township.
Yeah, I'd like to say, I, um, I worked with Vera during her entire tenure on the Conservation Committee. And as a township, we've been blessed to have Vera, both as a citizen and as a volunteer. And I'd just say thank you, Vera, for making West Rock Hill a better place to live, I wish you the best.
Yep, agreed, I would say, I will, I would say the same thing, but, uh, David's already said it, thank you, Vera.
Okay.
I would just make a motion to advertise, uh, accept her resignation and authorization to advertise.
Oh, all right, I'll make the motion to accept to advertise, do I hear a second?
Second, Collingwood.
Okay, motion been made, second, all those signify by saying aye?
Aye.
You have it.
That's all I have.
All right, very good. Okay, any old business?
I have none.
I have none.
I do want to bring in one, up one thing, one road, uh, that is a concern, and we talked about it over the, over the years in the past. And that is, um, Old Mill. Um, I, I have some concerns, and we, and I think we should, we should seriously look at this road for next year or possibly after to, to decide, you know, what we want to do, how we want to do it. Greg, there is something too that I, that I would like to investigate through the county, because I know the bridge that's on Old Mill is a county bridge. And, uh, I would like you to, to possibly reach out and try and get a, a meeting set up with somebody, a representative from the county to discuss the bridge that's on Old Mill, if that would be possible?
Will do.
Thank you so much. Anyone else have any other old business? Okay, any new business?
I have none.
I have none.
Okay, very good, I have none. Okay, next on the agenda is public comment. Please identify yourself and state your name and address once you are identified. I don't see anything on my screen, Greg, do you?
I have none either.
No emails?
No emails.
Okay. All right. Well, on behalf of the board, I would like to thank everybody for, um, the year of twenty-twenty-two, I would like to say Merry Christmas to those who celebrate Christmas, I'd like to say Happy Hanukkah. And, uh, I believe there's something called Kwanzaa. Uh, and any other thing that you celebrate, I would like to thank you and have you celebrate. Uh, with that being said, I would entertain a motion for adjournment.
I'll move to adjourn.
Second, David Collingwood.
All right, motion been made, second, and Greg, our reorganization is the first Monday of January, is that correct?
Think it's, hold on, let me pull it up, it's on our web.
Tuesday, January, January third.
January third, okay, so we will have our next meeting on January third here, right?
Correct.
Okay. Have a great evening, travel safe, everyone. And we will, uh, we will see you in January. All right. Good night.
Happy holidays.